Here.
Thomas Sissick, Gaines.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Can I ask that we stand for the prayer to be followed by the pledge? Please bow our heads. Dear Father, we find ourselves at a time when this state has been faced with a number of challenges. The flood and tornadoes have imposed a great burden on many of our citizens and we ask that you come into their lives and give them relief and recognition of the difficulties that they're facing and give them guidance and comfort as we look to the future and the future with your blessing. Please look on our men and women in military in the uniform as they guard our freedoms, both in this country and certainly abroad, and please bring them home safely and soon and end the conflict as honorably as we know how in all of our foreign lands. Let me ask that you give this council your gift of guidance and wisdom as we go about deliberating the future of the city and through the guidance and understanding of your Son Jesus Christ, in whom name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved as submitted. Any discussion on the motion?
Bryant, Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Here.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
We have, let's deal with the communications and on the blanket motion and then we've got a variety of presentations to get started on. So is there a motion that, is there a blanket motion that we accept and file the communications?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any one of the nine, does any council member care to pull?
Number eight.
All right, number eight. And I want number seven to be pulled too. So one, two, three, four, five, six, and nine. Any other? On the motion.
Bryant, Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and read number eight first since that was the first one pulled? Ms., you want to read it in its entirety or by title?
Well, there's not much of it, but, yeah, let's read it entirety.
All right, please.
Okay, number eight is an email to Mayor Hayes and council members. It is from Matthew Richard, Ward Two. It's regarding considering R-0842, which authorizes the preparation of ordinances levying a one cent sales and use tax. Please remember to allow full citizen input on the legislation itself and insist the legislation be read three times at three separate and district meetings. This will allow the voters, residents, and businesses in North Little Rock time to consider the implications of an additional sales tax and have considered time to reach the representatives of the council. In the recent past, the emergency clause was used to rush through similar sales tax legislation without prior citizen input, resulting in a special election held just 42 days later. With early voting beginning just 27 days after the first reading, the second and third readings occurred seconds later at a special call meeting on June 28, 2005. Of course, all voters will have their say at a special election, but we reserve the right to address our representatives during the legislative part of the process and effect the legislation under consideration if necessary. And Ms. Whitby, if you would print a copy for Mr. Thomas, and Mr. Thomas is not here, respectfully, Matthew Richard.
Move accept and file. Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Just read number seven and then I'll summarize it. We don't need to read the entire thing.
By title, this is a letter from my queues with TransTech Consulting. It's regarding underground utility cost estimate, MSA Energy Smart House Way of 115 patients.
Essentially, and I know we've been exploring avenues to try to address various issues surrounding our relocation of power lines from the Smart House Way property, and one of the points that was raised was the possibility of putting that underground, that transmission underground. If I'm not mistaken, the value of the property has been pegged, do you remember, Mr. Drake? 2.9 million. And that is, and help correct me if I'm wrong, that is without the utility, without the power lines as well as the cleanup having occurred, the guesstimated cost of this, and obviously it's round numbers, but seven and a half million, which the letter does note some of the reasons that the cost of underground transmission for this type of line is so expensive. And obviously, if that was an answer, it would render that value of that property about half a million dollars, no, about five million dollars in the red. So it certainly appears unpractical for us to put any transmission underground, at least with that high voltage. So with that, there's a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Go ahead.
About, I don't want red, but number nine, I understand there's one more public meeting about the railroad crossings. That's May 8.
Well, if that's what it says.
It doesn't say that though, but it says it's acts like.
Mr. Valls, come on up here.
The planning commission wanted to go ahead, they had heard, I think, five times. Now, we can hold it again, but they went ahead and voted to send the report to the city council on the establishment of a quiet zone. Their recommendation was if we close any of the four that were considered, it'd only be 22nd Street. We received opposition on the other three.
So it means you're not having one on May 8, the public hearing?
That's correct.
It says on that sign that we're having another one, one more on May 8.
That's correct. They wanted to go ahead and send it up to the council at the last planning commission meeting, and so that's what they voted on, and it's before you by correspondence.
Okay, I'll go by there, but you be sure and tack those signs down as soon as possible.
We will.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's, I'll tell you what, we can go ahead and dispose of the special call and then we'll go to the presentations. Ms. Whitby, would you publish the special call?
Yes, sir. A letter dated April 11, 2008, honorable members of the city.
While you're calling that, Ms. Powell, would you go over to my desk and get that piece of information that you gave to me, it's on my desk, and bring it back? Thank you. Go ahead.
Members of the city council, this is to advise that we have called a special council meeting of the North Little Rock City Council for 7:05 PM on April 14, 2008, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. Number one, an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for repairs to the fence and entrance gate at the North Little Rock Airport, ratifying the expenditure for said repairs, appropriating funds, declaring an emergency end for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. Number two, an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for cleanup, demolition, and reconstruction of the North Little Rock Airport building, appropriating funds, declaring an emergency end for other purposes sponsored by Mayor Patrick H. Hayes. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Patrick H. Hayes, and this is signed by all eight aldermen or their representative.
Mr. Smith, you want to come to the microphone? I know that you and I, as well as Mr. Alessandro, have been out there with some degree of frequency in that, that obviously in this city, that was the area of our geography that was the most impacted. Thankfully, there were no loss of lives or injuries that I'm aware of, but, you know, tell us why you want us to move forward to this legislation.
Well, the fencing has already been done. It was damaged pretty badly along with the gates on the east side. We had to have that secure because of all the requirements as far as the airport goes. So that has been done, and I guess we're asking you to bless that, that we had to make that decision at a very timely moment. The, our largest hangar out there that is leased, Air Charter Express, took the direct hit. There is probably 15, 17 planes that need that hangar for security, five of which are jets, two are King Air, so they're very high dollar planes, and the security is very important there. They cannot secure the planes, they can't secure their parts, they can't secure anything, nor can they be in business, and they're our largest tenant out there. So we have asked Hyde Co Construction to come in and repair this temporarily. The price that you see in front of you, 111,000, that includes a contingency figure also. It will actually make the hangar somewhat smaller because the 30 feet of the west end was damaged, so it's going to make 30 to 50 feet smaller hangar temporarily until we can have time to assess the damage for y'all and the airport commission to figure out where we want to go next with that property. It is their opinion that we can use, if we choose to build it back exactly like it was, that we'll be able to use 90% of this money that you're, we're asking you to approve tonight for the, to put it back like it was. So worst case scenario, we might lose about $10,000 by fixing it, but it's today, but it's going to save us rent that we wouldn't be able to charge, that we'll be able to continue to charge, and we feel like that makes the most sense to do, to get them back in business. We're concerned, we don't want our customers leaving and going somewhere else to hangar their planes and have their planes worked on and everything else, and they won't come back, so.
Questions? Would you then read the first item in the special call, Ms. Whitby, or Ms. Marshall?
This is, excuse me, this is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for repairs to the fence and entrance gate at the North Little Rock Airport, ratifying the expenditures for said repairs, appropriating funds, first reading.
Spent the rules and place on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Excuse me?
No.
What are we voting?
We're dealing with.
Right now, we're voting on spend the rules, but.
On the first one.
The first one is to authorize what we already actually have done. Is that right, Mr. Smith, in terms of paying for the fencing or contracting for the fencing that's already up at the airport?
So we suspend, suspend the rules, and then we're going to take the fencing first and the hangar second.
That's correct.
Thank you. Yes?
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for repairs to the fence and entrance gate at the North Little Rock Airport, ratifying the expenditure for said repairs, appropriating funds, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for repairs to the fence and entrance gate at the North Little Rock Airport, ratifying the expenditure for said repairs, appropriating funds, third and final reading.
On the question.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Please read the second one, Ms. Whitby.
This is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for cleanup, demolition, and reconstruction of the North Little Rock Airport building, appropriating funds, first reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on the second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for cleanup, demolition, and reconstruction of the North Little Rock Airport building, appropriating funds, second reading.
Move suspend the rules and place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for cleanup, demolition, and reconstruction of the North Little Rock Airport building, appropriating funds, third and final reading.
Question?
I know that we have insurance, the city has insurance on the hangar, how does this, how's the insurance work into this? I mean.
The insurance company has given us permission to go forward with this patch job, if you will, after tonight, and we'll start working the rest of this week trying to get a cost evaluation, what's going to cost to put it back just like it was, then we'll sit down and negotiate somewhat with the insurance company.
Okay.
We have a $5,000 deductible.
Okay, just want to make sure we had the insurance.
I know you said this a while ago, but I missed it. Why are we, why are we waiving?
It would take us probably 45 days to hire an engineer and architect to do the plans, advertise, bid it out, and then order all the steel, so we're putting this somewhere in midsummer before we can get it, get that building back into business.
It's a great answer.
Thank you.
Let's have a motion, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman.
Quick question, will we end up pursuing any Arkansas Aeronautic brands?
Absolutely. We've been in contact with several of our people at the state. Willie Alessandro's airport manager is working on it diligently, trying to figure out if there, Rick Azell with Emergency Services is working with FEMA, so we're trying to, we're asking for all the help that we can get.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Let's get a motion to adopt on third and final.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Bryant, Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Let's, I've got about three things that I want to take care of, and the first I want to, I guess all of which are very exciting. First one was the Travelers. Mr. Pete Levin, Pete, you want to come up to the microphone? Now, let me introduce this before I come down there. Pete, you can pick up that check. Now, most of us know about this because we've read about it, but, and literally the check is not in the mail, it's in the bank. As the Travelers and the city, we all recall, partnered, and as you look at that, Pete, you can go ahead and sign it in front of the camera. Now, there's a camera, it's much more important than, than perhaps Mr. Sisson might be, and I think you've got a mark a lot that, you know, we're going to let you put your John Henry on. As this is something that the city and the Travelers partnered on, we all recall that as Pete signs the check, that we agreed to devote all of our funds in excess of what the Travelers would need to retain for operating costs to retire our debt when our cost for the quality ballpark that we wanted exceeded the 28 million. It did that by about six, and now with this $1 million payment, we're bringing it back in the $5 million range. Pete, I want to accept that and tell you how much we appreciate the partnership. Now, one of the things, and I'm going to let you, you know, share anything you want to with us, but I know that David Kay, who is the ticket manager, had indicated to me that we were about 300 season tickets ahead of where we were our inaugural season going into our second season, and absent any further tornadoes or otherwise, that we're looking forward to an exciting year. We can bring a little bit more of the beneficial weather to us, but thanks for the million and as much thanks for the great family entertainment that the Travelers are providing, and now that we are on a winning streak, if I'm not mistaken, two games?
Two games, yes, sir, going into tonight.
Anything else you might want to add?
Well, I just want to say on behalf of the Travelers, Bill Valentine, our entire executive board, board of directors, we couldn't be happier to present this check for a million dollars tonight to the city for all your efforts in getting us our new home, Dicky Stevens Park, and I just look forward to doing it again next year.
We are excited about it, Pete, and thanks a lot for coming. We appreciate you being here and convey our regards to the suspenders fellow, last name of Valentine.
I certainly will. Please don't tell him I signed a million dollar check tonight.
Absolutely not. The, the second thing is Rick Azell here. Rick, you want to come on up to the microphone and let me just go ahead and read this while you come. It's a proclamation that we recognize emergencies can occur at any time, police, fire, medical services, and that when those emergencies occur, prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical, as you have heard us talk about how important we feel your office is in making sure that when that call comes in, those officers or firefighters or medical response through the person of MEMS is there and on duty. That the quality of information being accurately transmitted is without a doubt critical, that public safety dispatchers are the first in some of the initial usually contacts with people who need our emergency services, and that public safety dispatchers are indeed a vital link for our police officers, firefighters, by their monitoring of activities by radio and providing information and ensuring their safety, and that the dispatches of our emergency services office have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire and rescue operations, and that each dispatcher, each dispatcher under your tutelage has compassion, understanding, and professionalism and exhibited that during the performance of their job this past year, and as such, we'd like to recognize them, your office, and all those similarly involved in public safety as declaring the week of April 13 through 19 of this year's National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose dedication, diligence, and professionalism keep our community and citizen and city safe. Rick, you want to make a quick comment while I come down and present this to you?
Yes, sir, Mayor. On behalf of the dispatchers, we want to thank you for this recognition. They work very hard, there's some on duty tonight taking care of business and others that'll come on later, so we appreciate this. I want to publicly say how much we appreciate the fire department, police department, who have assisted us during our personnel shortage, they're doing an admirable job, so we appreciate their assistance. So, behalf of the dispatchers, thank you again.
Thanks, Rick, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Many of, many of us who are looking to enjoy some of our golden years keep looking at those that are coming up behind us, and while I won't talk about my two granddaughters and perhaps the third grandchild that's on the way, I will talk about a young man, Preston Strobel. Preston, you're here if you want to come up along with your parents, if they're here. We, they're going to let you stand on your own, which we're, which we're looking forward for you to do. I had an opportunity to write a letter when Preston was applying to be admitted to the U.S. Coast Guard Academy, and he'd been thinking about this for quite a while, and we just learned after 4,000 other applicants every year and only 400 are offered appointments that Preston made the grade. So let's just right now thank Preston. In 600 of North Little Rock High School, and there were 750 Preston when I graduated, so a little bit smaller these days, Preston ranked number 16, which is a tremendous accomplishment. I know I was in the upper third, but I was it. I was the last one in the upper third. You had to be that to be graduation speaker, and I just barely did make that too. But in addition, Preston is the captain of the swim team, 2007, and holds numerous swim records in all state, for the, being all state for the past three years, the editor of the yearbook, technical director of TV news, and we sure appreciate that in 2007, Preston's family was a host family delegate for our sister city the last summer in, in North Little Rock. So if I could, Preston, in honor of your accomplishments, and rest assured, many of us will sleep better at night when you're on duty guarding our coast. So if I could share this 14th day of April 2008 is Preston Strobel Day in honor of his acceptance to the U.S. Coast Guard Academy and his vigilance as he protects our coast. Preston, congratulations. Congratulations. And now we've got a billion dollars, you know, we've got our coast secure. We have, what else have we done except hear from our treasurer? Deborah Buckner, Deborah, you've got a little bit of something you want to share with us or report to the city council, so if I could offer you the microphone, please come and join us.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody, and I'm going to ask my good financial friend, Bob Sisson, to stand up and help me with my little presentation. You can tell I caught him off guard here. I don't have a million dollars, but I do send you more than that every year, but it's not in addition to what you're expecting to come. I'd like to recognize, I've got three staff members here with me tonight who are not getting paid overtime, by the way, they voluntarily came at my great urging to, because they're North Little Rock folks, I'd like to recognize them, and I want to say that I'm on a little bit of a public education mission, and I have a gift for you and something else to decorate your halls, probably, Ms. Whitby, but let us take this out. I thought Ms. Farrell was ahead of me, so I wasn't quite ready. While we're getting this out, I do want to say to you that Bob and I were already having the conversation that the very first TIF money has come through, and you may know that or may not, but we scratched our head quite a bit at the Treasury, that profoundly impacted the distribution of our tax money, and so we worked long and hard to figure out how to get Bob the money. Now, what he does with it when he gets it, that's up to y'all. This is a gift that we've brought to the city, and this basically says, "North Little Rock, where do your taxes go? We find many of our taxpayers don't have an understanding of where their money goes once I get it and where we distribute it, and this is our gift to you to display again somewhere in the city." And one of the most interesting things that you can find if you look on our website is each city is very different. Of all the eight cities in Pulaski County, here in North Little Rock, you'll see the big green pie-shaped box, a pie piece, is 68.8%. Roughly, people speak of 70, 75, but you will be informed for your constituents that in North Little Rock, 68.8% goes to public schools. You have a little sliver that goes 1% for Arkansas Children's Hospital, which some people don't realize is the county hospital, and that's where all the revenue for county hospital goes is to Arkansas Children's. Your fire and police pensions are here, 3.4%. The blue is a sliver, 4.9% for Rhodes. Lehman Library here in the Burgundy is 5.1%, and let me assure you, Jeff Baskins is on my speed dial, and he calls me frequently about his revenue for Lehman Library. Here we have the portion that we provide to the city, and Bob knows this piece, 8.4% of the tax revenue we collect from all of your constituents, which I happen to be one, my husband and I pay our taxes too. And here is the portion that is contributed for all of the citizens in North Little Rock toward all the county services, the coroner, the sanitation, my staff, the assessor, the clerk, et cetera, and all the sheriff's operations. And I felt like, based on the questions that we do receive, that this is a way that folks could have a better understanding and a visual, I like color, that's why there's color, of where their tax money goes. People pay many different types of taxes, but we are champions of public schools and city services, county services, children's hospital, et cetera, and so we bring this tonight as a form of gift. I think that you paid $40 for this, so it's tax dollars well spent, Mayor, if you will indulge us the $40 for a gift back to you. So maybe you can give it to Bob, just stick in his office. But I, I did want to also make mention of the fact that the biggest question that we have had recently from many constituents is the homestead tax credit went up to $350, and what impact did that have on, in Pulaski County? So, we're at nearly $30 million that now comes into the coffers as state half-cent sales tax revenue as opposed to real estate property taxes. So, that $50 had a huge impact on what we do and how we distribute the money back to you for the council to spend as they choose. I hope that you find benefit from this, and we are always available here at the phone number and the website. And you are one of our largest and most important customers, especially to me, since we choose to live in North Little Rock. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah, and we appreciate it. We're glad you're here. And give Joel our regards.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and let, and then we'll go into Lisa Alderman Parker and Margaret with regard to the North Little Rock cleanup. I'm going to turn this over now to Margaret and Alderman Parker.
And Debbie Ross, also.
And Debbie Ross.
Yeah, Debbie's serving on our committee as well. Well, we've been doing this a lot of years, haven't we, John Parker?
At least three.
At least three. A lot more than three. Mayor, we are making plans right now for the Great North Little Rock Cleanup, Saturday, May the 17th. Our committee's been meeting for about two and a half months, I guess, making plans, trying to do several things to increase the number of people who come out on the 17th to enjoy a good day of camaraderie and cleaning up their neighborhoods, as well as trying to get people more involved in cleaning up throughout the year. And to that end, we are wanting to increase the number of adoptive street sponsors. We're looking at some changes in that program possibly. But we have such a good time on the 17th, and we usually have a really good turnout, up to 400, 500 volunteers throughout the city. But we sure would like to have your group, whoever you are out there, who maybe you've participated before, maybe you hadn't. But Debbie and John, would you all like to say something about it?
I would certainly like to see a lot more participation. We've had great turnouts in the past. This year, we're moving our reception after the cleanup from the downtown Seventh and Main location to Burns Park, so we can really have a big picnic. And we've also changed our menu from pizza, I think, to catered barbecue. So, if you're looking forward to some good food after the cleanup, we're trying to entice you with a nice new location out at Burns Park near Funland, and I think you'll enjoy it. There's a lot of plus benefits to participation, and food's not the least of which we'd like to offer.
Alderman Ross?
For the ones that haven't participated before, you can choose your own area, pick out your neighborhood. You don't have to be assigned to another neighborhood. You can do your area, get your neighbors together, clean up your own neighborhood, and you get a free t-shirt.
We need everyone to contact me or Alderman Parker or Alderman Ross, but we need, we're asking for everyone to get their reservations in by Wednesday, May the 7th, so that we can be assured that we have plenty of cleanup supplies and t-shirts and everything to make sure that everybody gets what they need to be successful. We really do want the groups, the adoptive street sponsors are usually really good about turning out. We want them to turn out, and we really want other groups to consider joining that because that really assists us all year long. And the one-day cleanup is a great thing, and I think it speaks to the conscience of people and young people. But Alderman Parker has really been harping on this for a long time, and so have I, that we really need more people to take more responsibility for their neighborhoods, even if they don't do it in a formal way. Take a bag when you go for a walk and pick up trash along the way, but keep our city cleaner. We really, we really need help on that.
Thank you.
So, I hope you all will contact our office. My phone number is 340-5305, and they can email me. We're sending lots of flyers out, but you can contact my office for a flyer and reservation forms.
Thank you, and we are obviously joining our voice to encouraging people to not only be a part of this, but to try to be conscious of how much easier it'd be if we didn't have to clean up, which means not throwing out trash in the first place. So, we're asking you to be mindful and let this use as, be used as a lesson to add to our reduction in trash being deposited in the first place. I've kept the council up to date as much as I could on the progress of the hydro. And while I've been telling you the good, now let me tell you the not-so-good. We really haven't generated almost anything in the last, since the last council meeting. And while we, at one point, were up about 600,000, we're now down from the budget projection, a like amount. So, you know, if we can dry up the rain a little bit, it's certainly having an effect on our hydroelectric production. So, we hope that we catch up, and we hope the water gives us a little bit of an opportunity to generate. So, we've taken about a million-two swing in where we were before the rains came. And of course, the headline today said that we've gotten almost a year's worth of rain in a half, in six weeks. So, you know, we, we're hopeful that that changes back to the direction it was to start with. So, that piece of information. Now, let me turn it over to Lisa Farrell. Lisa, if you want to come to the microphone. Many of us have seen this transmittal. Lisa's working hard close to the river, and now we wanted to give her an opportunity to bring us up to date on some of the things that are going on in her neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. I'm mindful that you all have a very full agenda this evening, but I met with Mayor Hayes a few weeks ago about our hopes to work on some of the public areas in the Barron Cross neighborhood that are not in Rock Water but are in the neighborhood, used by the neighbors, and are visited by 28,000 people every day that commute through Barron Cross. Very much following the Argenta model, we have put together a nonprofit, and in the package it lists the various members of the nonprofit, including Jack Finnegan, who is here with us this evening, who's president of the Barron Cross Neighborhood Association. We've been working very closely with them. We had a marketing group come up with the logo for us. They did that as a pro bono project, and we're very appreciative of that. So, you can see a logo that we've developed for the neighborhood. Many of us in this room have Barron Cross stories, grew up there, knew folks there. I went to the little St. Mary's, which is technically outside of the historic boundaries of Barron Cross. It's up to 15th Street, but many of us know Barron Cross very well. I just want to take you very quickly and show you, of course, we all know that the gateway of Pike Avenue to the Barron Cross area has a very industrial look. What we want to do is modify that to a more residential, more enjoyable boulevard look. And we appreciate the investment that the city is making in Barron Cross, an area that has been neglected for a long time, and I'm sure the 28,000 commuters will appreciate the investment as well with the new roadway. But we also understand that the city, as much as we'd like for you all to do everything, we understand the economic realities, and so we are now going to start seeking corporate assistance, grants, other things to help with, I think, things that are crucial. I think beautification and aesthetics is important, but oftentimes has to take backseat to the more pressing day-to-day needs that you all face. You know, for example, the hangar at the airport. I mean, those things obviously do and should take priority for you all. I'm just showing you some of the current conditions of the Barron Cross area now. What we want to do is engage community support through grants and corporate assistance to help again with some of the things that we have talked about. What we would like to do, things that you've seen in Argenta, the historic streetlights, historic street signs, landscaping. This is a model, what we'd like to see happen with the Broadway Bridge underpass, that's a model, obviously, either painting faux-rocking on there, doing some sort of painting, or possibly, if engineering will allow it, some sort of veneer rocking. That's, Martin Smith is our landscape architect who's worked with us on coming up with that. Again, obviously, looking to what has already been done in North Little Rock, carrying that on down the River Trail. So, things that we're looking for, we will go to various corporate entities. We will ask U.P. if they can help by painting the storage tanks, landscaping, those sorts of things. We will be, we have applied for grants to work with artwork, murals, signage, eventually the conversion of the bike path to, I'm sorry, river road to a bike path. We're working with the local bike groups, with Ron Rosardi and his groups to make that transition. There's, as you all know, 28,000 people that commute through that area each day, and so beautification of that area will have a significant impact on a lot of folks. One thing that I'm very excited about is a river and rail history exhibit that we would like to do. I'm going to pass around, this is an image that I borrowed, I'll admit freely, from Central Arkansas Library with their permission, but it shows on smaller scale how you can put historic photos on, I don't even know what this material is called, but it's designed to hold up outside in the weather. And, you can pass that around. We would like to do a display of historic photos featuring the history of North Little Rock, specifically river and rail because of the significant impact. We've been working with Erin Ruby, who is a talented architect who specializes in historic works, and he has come up with a proposed panel that could be placed on, our thought is the median on Pike, and maybe do six of those panels, again, reflecting the history of North Little Rock, particularly, again, river and rail. We have, are working with the North Little Rock History Commission to have a historic district formed in the area. Just a little piece of information of interest, below 11th Street, there are 249 parcels of property, 100 and, excuse me, 241. 129 of those are either vacant lots or held by folks that take pride in their property. Of those, 129, 52 are owned by a corporation or a company, LLC, that my husband and I own, and then another couple, the Abstins own. So, there's a lot of people that are privately investing in Barron Cross to try and make a turnaround in that neighborhood. I won't ask for opinion. I picked those colors. My husband differs with me. I think that's a great color, but I'm not going to go any further on that. These are some opportunities that we will be looking for from, again, corporations and grants. We're applying to the Heritage Department and a variety of things. So, these are the type of things that we will be seeking help with, streetlights with banners, murals, the river rail exhibit, you know, those sorts of things. These are outstanding investments that you all have already made in the community, and again, we are highly appreciative of those. We're not here this evening to ask for more investment, but just to let you all know that we will be seeking community support, and some of that community support will take place with you all's approval as it, as it comes on public property. I mean, obviously, streetlights are public and landscaping is public. We received our first donation from Custom Printing, which has been in business on Pike Avenue since 1967, Paul Strack and his family. So, I want to give him a call out, or whatever the right phrase is. And again, you all have made tremendous investment, and without this type of investment, I think what's been going on in Argenta and what we hope to achieve in Rock Water would not be occurring. And then, Jack and I were both very mindful of your time this evening, and so we talked about, I would indicate that he was here showing his support, and if you all wanted to hear from him, he is glad to do that. Two other things very quickly. May 17th, we are planning a cleanup for Barron Cross neighborhood. So, anybody who's ever lived in Barron Cross or lives there now, come on down. We need the help. And then also, we have a website, www.barroncross.org, and we have set that up so alums of the neighborhood can share their history, you know, where did you live, who were your neighbors, tell us a Barron Cross story, those types of things, and also the details about this plan are on here. My purpose this evening was just to inform you all, you know, there's not a motion or anything, but just to kind of let you know and seek your, you know, tacit nod, either yes or no, or, and I'm sure we'll be back with you, or hopefully, we'll be back with you when we have more funding and we can say, you know, please, can we put in the streetlights? Please, can we do these additional things?
I know we're making progress. We have a couple items on the agenda with regard to Third Street tonight, asking council for authorization to move forward with the condemnation of a couple pieces of property. I know the contract for the engineering on the roundabout is in progress in addition to Ninth Street, I believe. So, you know, this council, with its approval of the budget, allocated some funding subject to its continued approval and to try to move what we, I'm sure all believe is a very significant opportunity for the city is the western part from the river with your and Jim's leadership along with others will make happen, and not the least of which is the, is, you know, Jack and Jim and the Barron Cross Association, as they continue to work strongly in the interest of that organization in that area. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless I see something different, I just, let me make this announcement, you know, in case anybody's here for this, Resolutions 0821, having to do with Siemens Technology Contract, as well as ordinance accompanying that, which are still in the unfinished business section, you know, to the extent that we're going to go forward, we're going to go forward without moving forward with those two items. I know that the county received some legal input. We've been holding those due to the legal questions that were raised by our own city attorney as well as others, and our conclusion is the same as the county, county's conclusion with regard to the, we'll say, the comfort level of moving forward with this type of contract as well as the financing of it. So, with those, R. 0821 and 0814 will be withdrawn. The only thing that remains on the unfinished business then is R. 0822. I'm going to go ahead and call that, and then I'm going to reconvene the public hearing. Ms. Whitby, if you would read that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but before we can start with that, I'd like to recognize Tom Gibbons, who's vice president and general manager of Lamar. Mr. Height and I have been visiting with him, and I think you have visited with him also, and we're happy to have him with us this evening.
Mr. Gibbons, you want to say hello real quickly, or, I mean, you're certainly welcome to.
Hi, Jim.
Sure.
Again, I just wanted to recognize the mayor and the board for, you know, the veto on the ordinance and, of course, talk to Mr. Height, Mr. Witcher. And the industry in Lamar, we look forward to trying to get together, find some common ground, do what we can for the community, improve the look at the signage throughout North Little Rock. I appreciate y'all's time, and thanks again.
Well, thanks for the partnership. We look forward to working with you as we move this community forward, and thank you for being here.
Okay, very much so. Thanks again.
I would say that in the last few days or a week or so, I've come to know Mr. Gibbons and had a couple of conversations with him, and I, I'm hearing nothing but wanting to work with the city in North Little Rock and to maybe tweak a couple, tweak a couple of ordinances that would, everybody would benefit from that in the future, so.
We agree. We like to work with people best we can. With that, Ms. Whitby, go ahead and read R. 0822.
Yes, sir. Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a relocation agreement of right-of-way conveyance from the city of North Little Rock to Entergy Arkansas Incorporated.
Now, real quickly, just in case anybody has any questions, Mr. Drake, you want to come to the microphone and let me refresh our memory, and then I'm going to open it for public comment after a couple of quick items, and that is that the city attorney's office discovered that we retained the air rights above a certain footage, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And that as we are at literally the final stage in terms of cleaning up the contamination on the Smart House Way property as well as the relocation of the power lines, the conveyance of these air rights, because they're above a certain level and because we retained them in some past understanding, is necessary for the council to do in order to, in essence, take the final legislative step, as I understand it, before those power lines are relocated. Obviously, there has been some differences of opinion as to which side of the road those power lines ought to reside on, and we'll open that up in just a second. But in terms of the legislative action, that's essentially what this is, is to authorize the utilization of our air rights above a certain footage. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney, as well as Mr. Drake? And secondly, there are a couple of things that we were working on in order to try to reduce the impact of this relocation of the power lines, you know, and I'll ask Mr. Hughes to come to the microphone in just a second. He's the author of the letter that indicated the cost would be somewhere in the neighborhood, best guess, $7.5 million if we were to try to bury this, if any council member has any questions. The second thing, or an additional thing that we were working with, is I made a call to Energy requesting the opportunity for us to co-locate our distribution lines on the relocated transmission line. And you, your office was in contact, I believe, with the legal office of Energy. Can you report?
That's true. We-
That's true. We have been in contact with them, and we understand that the people who need to make the decision for Energy in order for us to be able to co-locate lines, our distribution lines with their transmission lines, have agreed in principle that we can follow that course of action. Of course, we'll still have to have some agreements in place to do it. We're confident that's just a matter of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, and we anticipate being able to achieve that goal.
And I know that I went down today and actually tried to visually determine what that impact might have, and let me just remind the council without looking at a map, that by and large, from the rail overpass along Riverfront Drive, going along Superior Spring and to the corner of Mr. Lloyd's property, there is distribution, our distribution, and then that distribution runs north going toward Broadway. You know, what we would be able to do is reduce the number of, in fact, reduce, do away with the poles that we are using now for our distribution and co-locate our distribution on the new transmission lines. When it gets to Mr. Lloyd's property, that would also allow us to do away with two poles that are currently on his property, along with some guidelines that are there, and then traverse along Riverfront Drive toward crossing close to the Broadway Bridge to then go on over to the south side of the river. That distribution would no longer be there along that route, but it would have somewhat of a beneficial effect, at least as the poles that are currently on Mr. Lloyd's property would then have the opportunity to be removed. I had a chance to visit with him a little earlier this afternoon. This certainly doesn't remove his objection, but it is, at least as I understand it, some beneficial ability for us to reduce the number of poles and certainly the visual concern for that transmission line, the relocation of that transmission line. Is there anything else? You know, if you've got anything else to add, Mr. Drake, feel free, if there are any questions from the council.
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Hughes, you want to come up and just, you know, just, I guess, reaffirm that you're the author of this letter and see if there are any questions with regard to the bearing of this kind of a transmission line?
Certainly, Mayor. I am the author of this letter, that we looked at the cost and came up with a cost in the range of $7.5 million to place this line underground. I'd be glad to elaborate on that, or just take questions at your preference.
Any council member?
I have a question, but I don't know if it's of Mr. Hughes or not, but it may be of you and Mr. Drake.
All right.
Is there any possibility that we could use a smaller footprint or a smaller pole in the existing locations where the power lines are now? Is that, is that, any, has that been considered?
Well, let me answer that, and the answer is no. If anything, we're going to be using a little bit bigger pole, and the reason for that is the co-location of the distribution. There will be fewer poles by some number, but because of the separation, and you can help me out with this if you need to, Mr. Drake, or anybody for that matter, but because of the separation required between the distribution lines, as well as the transmission lines, there needs to be actually a little higher pole and a little bigger pole that will be required, so that they can have the required separation between the distribution and the transmission. There will be fewer poles, and we will be able to, as I said, co-locate. But if anything, to be candid, the poles will be a little bit larger. Now, one of the other requirements that, you know, that as I looked at what was going to take place, there are currently at least two guy wires, cables, that help the structural strength of the wooden poles that are down there now. In order to take those poles away and to have it simply a standalone pole, that pole would need to be somewhat larger. Now, when it's larger, I don't know that in terms of circumference, if you're looking at one much larger than the wooden poles that are down there now, at least in its circumference.
Mayor, they will be bigger. The straight-line poles will be on the order of probably 24 inches in diameter. They'll be larger poles because they have to support the transmission and the distribution. In addition to that, Entergy has required that all of the poles be unguide, which most cities see as being a beautification, getting away from the guy wires, but when we do that on the corners in particular, those poles can get fairly large and with a wide foundation on that. But it gets away from guy wires. The guy wires are both a visual obstruction, and there also can be a safety obstruction. If someone hits a guy wire, the pole can fall down without it, and you have a sounder location.
Alderman Gaines?
You want to say something?
Well, I was just going to elaborate on Alderman Height's question. Alderman Height, the issue at the Smart House Way property is the easement. It's an 80-foot easement. In the Arkansas Highway and Transportation Department right-of-way, it's six feet. 80-foot easement running down the middle of that property renders it useless, except for a parking lot.
So that means, my question was about Alderman Height. So that means what you're saying, and we can't, you can't, or we can't, put those poles over against the fence or against, toward the river? It has to, we, I really don't understand why, as he said a while ago, why we have to have those five poles on the other side of the street? Why we couldn't put them closer to the river? I'm, it's all right, you'll do it.
Well, Alderman.
Let me explain.
All right. You did that a while ago, but I didn't think I understood. I might have.
The, first of all, I don't, you know, we had, the council authorized the sale of that property to another interest, Sam Hilber and John Flake. I'm not sure exactly what the corporate entity that they agreed to purchase that. After some period of due diligence, they came back and said they were not going to close on that because they did not feel that, they did not have confidence that the city would be able to, in a timely way, remove the hazardous material in addition to relocate the power lines. Any development that we have talked to over the last three, four, five years have always cited the relocation of those power lines as a critical part of moving forward with any activity, and of course, the city's interested in having a residential component down there. When we looked at where to relocate that, obviously, the choice principally was on the south side or north side of Riverfront Drive, and the north side was initially selected because of various utilities in the right-of-way. You know, that made some sense, but, you know, obviously, you could have gone either way, you know, with some modifications. Now, with the agreement for Energy to allow us to co-locate our distribution, which is presently on the north side, in order to reduce the poles that impact Superior Spring and the next owner, it's absolutely essential that we be on the north side in order to co-locate that distribution. Yes, ma'am.
This is for Mr. Drake. Is there an additional charge from Energy for these poles to do it this way, to stack them like this?
Alderman, they will cost more because they have to be taller, but there's no charge from Energy. That's a charge that we will absorb.
Okay. And when you said they're going to be taller, how tall will they be?
You're looking at poles on the order of probably 90 feet above ground. One thing they do is, right now, they're spread horizontally. When they put these poles down the street, instead of spreading horizontally, they'll stack them vertically.
And how tall? How tall are they now? The distribution?
They're probably 70-foot poles, 75-foot wood poles, set, you know, probably eight feet in the ground, making them about, you know, just slightly less than that out of the ground. And the new ones, Mr. Drake's saying, were 75 feet prior to the distribution, so the distribution will add, you know, probably 10 to 15, maybe 15 feet to that.
Can you say the ones on the corner are going to be wider? How wide, I mean?
Well, typically, they have to be, I've, I don't know what they have designed. I didn't design this one, but typically, I can see those being 30 inches in diameter poles. So it just depends on the strength requirement that they build into it, but they beef the pole up significantly.
And that's just on the corners?
The corners will be beefier poles. The straight-line poles will be larger than the existing ones, but not quite as hefty.
How many total poles now if we do this? Seven? Was it there five, and now we're adding two?
We have currently designed eight poles from the lattice tower along Riverfront, and then heading south to come in from the south of the station. There's a reasonable expectation that we'll be adding two more.
Okay, so on the north side of Riverfront Drive, how many will we have?
Five on the north side currently planned.
Okay.
And then three as we head south to come into the south side of the station.
So we're going to have to add more if we?
And here's why. The mayor touched on this. We currently have 300 feet between the spans for the transmission lines, but the distribution lines, we have to, we have to shorten the distance between the poles because they're not designed for long spans. Now, we haven't, we haven't pursued this yet, Alderman, so I'm going to hedge my comment by saying we have to have engineering design first, but it's reasonable to expect they'll have two more poles on the north side of Riverfront Drive by adding the distribution to them.
Now, you're going to also, in doing that, do we have? Do we have the number of poles, the wooden poles that will be removed?
We believe we'll remove six. Yes, sir. Quite a reduction, along with the guys, the lines that come down to the concrete foundations to hold the poles up.
Go ahead.
So when will we know? I mean, when will you know exactly, or?
As soon as we have authorization from the council, we'll call the engineers and they'll begin their design.
And rest assured, before we actually, you know, I mean, to the extent that we haven't been able, or haven't kept people informed, that's, you know, in part our mistake, and, you know, I don't think there's any question that this has become fairly well-known as we're moving forward. But to the extent that we, you know, once we get the final design, then we'll bring it back to the council, or we'll have a public hearing on the community. You know, tonight's decision is literally whether to go forward on the north side with the utilization of that airspace. With the design aspect of it.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Just a second. Let's make sure that every council member has finished.
So we're voting on it, but we don't know what it's going to be? That's kind of my question. I mean, until we, I thought that we already had it all. We knew exactly where they were going to go and everything.
We have some fairly good knowledge, but if you want exact knowledge, then we'll hold off.
Until we know exactly where it's going.
Can I say something?
You're like, you need to look at me.
Okay, well, I want to be recognized. You know, this thing continues just to change every other week, just to try to accommodate, and I feel like to make me, since I'm here raising the cane about it, to make me happy. We're not changing our mind. Alderman Ross is right. What, you can't vote on something not knowing what's going to happen. It's happened too many times in this city that you people were told one thing, and you voted, voted based on what you were told, and it came out completely different. Now, our family owns that property, and I talked to the other property owners down there today. We worked hard for what we have, and we bought that property knowing what was on it, and now the only thing is, is that we want to move this mess over off of your property, that you're going to sell to some land developer who's going to make a whole lot of money off of it, onto ours, which is going to hurt our property values. It's wrong. I think you all know it's wrong. I know you've had a lot of pressure put on you the last couple of weeks to vote for this thing, and I'm going to ask you, one, if you vote on them, I'm going to ask you to vote against the mayor on this one. Just to get another land development in the city of North Little Rock shouldn't be done at the expense of other property owners who have put their investment in this city in an area when nobody else wanted to put it in there. Two, I want to ask, and hopefully, Ms. Ross, if you would, I'd appreciate you making that recommendation, that we hold off on this because this.
Ms. Ross doesn't need to. We'll hold off on it until we get some final design, Mr. Lloyd, so you can rest assured we won't vote on it tonight.
That'll be fine. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
I still got it.
Go ahead.
Just help me, because I don't want my, please. I've forgotten, okay? What's the, when we do this, what's the cost to the city for doing this? I forgot what it was, or if there's any.
The estimated cost for the relocation is a hard cost of $650,000. Then we pay Energy's tax gross-up, which is an amount we have to pay Energy because we're giving them the poles for the right to relocate them. That's another about 36% on that $650,000. Then there's the costs associated with the environmental, that is, actually going to the locations for the poles, digging the ground up to making, make sure we have proper foundations for the footings. Then we have financing costs that come to right at $1 million total.
Okay. Now, let me ask you this, because I forgot, are the developers, and that's a very, and we know who these developers are, or this real straight cabinet, are they going to come back and pay more for the property, or do they pay more for a million? I don't remember what they, we sold it to them for.
Well, the property is valued at $2.9 million, with the proviso that the contamination is removed and the power lines are relocated.
Or does that mean what, they'll pay $2.9 million for it?
That's its appraised value. That's what we're asking to sell the property for. We're asking developers to pay that to us once we relocate the power lines and clean up the debris.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Let me just mention one other thing, though. Mr. Lloyd, you know, you made some references about people not knowing what they voted on. I think this council asked me, the last council meeting, to go contact Energy to see if we could reverse the decision with regard to the co-location of the poles, and that's exactly what I did. We didn't get that answer in definite terms until this evening or late this afternoon, and obviously, that does entail some difference, and we'll be happy to do that, but in terms of trying to bring information to this council, we're simply being as responsive as we know how. And obviously, as soon as I had that information, you and I were on the phone, and I was down there showing you what I knew to the extent that I knew it. So please, rest assured, we're not trying to cause people to vote on things without full information.
Thank you. I still would like a legitimate explanation for Mr. Drake as to why the poles can't stay on the south side of Riverfront Drive. He has used the excuse before, he told you all about these fiber optics that he says will cost $1 million an hour. Now, I'd like to know what million, if you're paying $1 million an hour, what they're paying those hourly guys in there doing the work on it, but at the same time, we have, we have fiber optics on our side of the road, so you'd have the same problem. So he really doesn't have a legitimate explanation why we should move it, except for the fact, get them off this property because we want these developers, the developers don't want them on there. That's the problem. Well, we were developers at one time, too, and, you know, I hope you all can figure out another way, way to do this, and make sure that those things don't jump Riverfront Drive and stay on that south side.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We're going to hold it. Mr. Drake, I want you to get some preliminary engineering as to the exact locations of the poles in light of Energy agreeing to co-locate those power lines, and we'll let the council know that response before we vote on it.
The first thing tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Next item?
On the public hearing, do you want to adjourn that or recess it?
No, we'll recess it. We'll keep everybody open. They can, you know, we can talk as much as we want.
Okay. New business, resolution 0838, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Evelyn Lovelace to the Senior Citizens Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0839.
Mayor, Ms. Lovelace is here.
Please, hey, Ms. Lovelace, how are you doing? Thank you very much. We appreciate your service, and thanks for your continued service. I see Mr. Backs out there.
Resolution 0839, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it. Well, Ms. Lovelace is just going on the commission, so we, but you've been down there a lot, we know, and we appreciate that. Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Joe Smith to the North Little Rock Public Building Authority.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0840, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Dan Scott to the North Little Rock Public Building Authority.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0841, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Todd Larson to the North Little Rock Public Building Authority.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Resolution 0842, Mayor Hayes.
I'm going to go ahead and have you read that, Ms. Whitby. I'm not going to call it, and I'm reading it just simply to bring before the council, and I've had a chance to share what I hope we will give some thought to between now and the next council meeting. And essentially, it is indicating to the city attorney that we would intend to bring before the voters essentially a one-cent sales tax that would be divided into two parts, one of which would go off in two years, and it would by and large help give us the ability to credit our citizens, the homeowners, with a 10% rate reduction from what they're currently paying, and our businesses, most of whom, not all, but most of our smaller businesses with a 5% reduction, and then the remainder to be considered dollars that we could use for economic development, similar to what we've done with the 2.5 million that we've divided with the Western Lower River Project or Barren Cross, as well as the Darkhalla Project. The other would go for six years, you know, both of which have sunsets. The second would be, we would utilize $1 million off the top essentially of those, of that one half cent, and each one of those half cents would produce about, you know, somewhere a little less than $9 million a year, beginning with October the 1st, if we decided to go forward and the council or the community adopts it. Now, that half cent would utilize $1 million in a way that the police department would recommend we could most effectively utilize those dollars in, you know, pursuing something similar to what we've got with our arrangement with Conway, or if the county would come up with something that we felt would be worthwhile for us to be able to keep bad people off the streets, or the last of which, in terms of the options that are obvious, would be to try to do something with the opening of our existing jail. But that would be the first dibs on that half cent that would last for six years. The second, it would be going in the same direction as what our original penny, that is a permanent penny, and would be divided in half, which would produce a little less than $4 million a year initially, half of which would go to help support salaries and wages for our 800 employees, as well as the other would go toward capital expenditures such as the building of a new fire station on the eastern part of the city, purchasing of equipment, you know, reinstituting our sidewalk or drainage program. And rest assured, you know, there's no magic in this. I think these are needs that I just felt, you know, would be some that our community may be willing to sacrifice, and we could go into more details, but we'll call a public hearing on that. You know, anybody that wants to comment on this, I'm certainly going to open the microphone at this point, and would look to trying to consider calling election on July the 8th and having the tax implemented on October the 1st. But again, you know, I don't have any desire, I've said this in individual conversations, I don't think any of us have a desire to carry forward something that the community doesn't have some reasonable interest in. We had a very favorable response, you know, 60% or better in terms of what we felt, you know, some polling was reflecting in terms of our ballpark and our original penny, and we just barely passed those with 52, 53% of the vote, maybe even 51. And so, you know, indeed, after explanation of what we're looking at, if there's any modifications, and that's certainly available for us to try to put together a package that may be something the community would endorse. If not, and if it doesn't seem that there's much of an opportunity, at least a 50/50 opportunity in my, from my perspective, then we need to go about trying to find other ways to support the different opportunities that the city has. With that, I'm certainly available for any questions, if any council member has any.
Mayor.
Okay, just one second. Any council member has any, but I certainly don't intend to call this tonight, and there may even be, you know, some substitution of language as we get into the next council meeting, or I think there's still an opportunity for the council meeting after that in order to meet a deadline for us to be able to call an election for the 8th of July. Mr. Carter, do you have anything you want to add to that?
The only thing I'll be working on in the interim is to formulate a ballot title that I think will be functional for the city and work through any legal issues that might be created, that it's a complex issue, and be able to put it in understandable fashion will be a bit challenging, but I look forward to working on it.
Alderman Height, and then Alderman Robinson?
Just, it's more of a comment than a question. Every once in a while, I'm down here on City Council, we do something that seems to wake up the pop, the citizens of North Little Rock, it strikes a nerve, and since you made the announcement, I think it was a week ago at the chamber meeting, my phone has started to ring, and my emails are filling up, and I went to a meeting, Indian Hills organizational meeting last week for their possibly new association, and it seems like when I receive a phone call or receive an email, there's about four things that are common. One is, they're questioning the timing of a special election, why we couldn't hold this until November, the general election. Two, the cost of a special election with the way things are and our city finances are, can we afford to have a special election? Three, more often than not, I'm being asked that the citizens, the residents, my constituents, have an opportunity to voice their opinions about this legislation, either in the form of a public hearing, or in possibly some of the neighborhood association meetings, they want, and I certainly want to hear from my constituents in my ward about this, and so I know you mentioned a public hearing a few minutes ago, and I'm hoping that we can have one at the next council meeting concerning this legislation to give everybody a, certainly, a little advanced warning about that. And then the other thing that I'm hearing is that the timeliness of a sales tax in the city of North Little Rock is just not right at this point in time, and, but that doesn't mean that I'm for or against anything, I just wanted to pass on the comments that I'm receiving, either through my emails or face-to-face, or even some phone calls, Mayor.
Well, one of the things, Alderman, that I worked for over a year to try to avoid going to the voters and seeing if there was a way that we could address the ballpark in the senior citizen center, and we were unable to do that, and simply just put this before the voters, and there's no better way for the community to express its will than in that way. You know, you can debate whether a special election or a general election, and no doubt there's one coming up. You know, the ballot's going to be pretty crowded this November, and in order for us to focus on what to me is a very important thing for this community, you know, special elections are generally what we've done with regard to sales taxes. That's the history that we have. It gives us a chance to focus on one issue, it gives the community a chance to focus on one issue, and then vote its conscience, those that go to the polls and those that want to indeed burden themselves more for what we're looking, to at least give folks an opportunity to do that. And again, the sales tax was adopted the last two times we've carried it, one permanent and one temporary. So, you know, that's a matter of decision by this council as to what might be the best to do, where obviously, you know, I'm going to call a public hearing on this, you know, we're going to offer this evening a chance for people to talk about it. I don't think there's any way in the 10 days that it's essentially been before us, you know, that we really can get a good reaction, number one, is what it is, you know, in terms of whether or not this approach is something that's viable, or whether there ought to be a change to it, and that's what I hope we are able to do over the next several weeks. I know that we have challenges. We have, I know Mr. Sisson just presented to me the increased cost in diesel fuel, it's going up by leaps and bounds, and I also am significantly aware of the cost to our citizens at the gas pump. You know, when you look at what we're getting back, at least could get back in terms of that, you know, a 10% reduction on our electric bills to North Little Rock residents, a 5% reduction in our low to moderate income folks, that would by and large mean that they may even come out ahead in terms of what the capital cost or the actual cost of what they might spend, you know, at least $2,000 a month if your average electric bill was 200, that would mean $20 less that you would have to pay that one penny sales tax, which means that it would cost you, at least you wouldn't reach that amount until you spent more than $2,000 worth of items that were subject to the sales tax. So, you know, there's no good time for something like this, but we have the unfortunate, although I believe fortunate, opportunity and mandate to balance our budget. And to me, you know, the most difficult challenge that we have is to try to give our folks an opportunity to match their desires with the needs that we have in order to provide those desires. Now, you know, if folks don't want to have a reinstitution of the sidewalk program, if they don't want to have, you know, a street program, the drainage program that this council enjoyed, we put, I think, 250,000, if I don't, or how much was it, Mr. Sisson, that we had in the drainage program before we had to cut significantly back on it with our electric rate increase? 50?
250,000.
250,000 a ward, if I'm not mistaken. We did a lot of drainage around here, and we did a lot of paving, and we did a lot of sidewalk, and, you know, if we, you know, we made a choice, the citizens voted at the last, not the last general election, but the one before, you know, that we wanted to reallocate $4 million a year to keep from having to raise our electric rates anymore than were absolutely necessary. And for us to want to see if they would like to go back to that and to enjoy those benefits that those programs provided, I would hope that this council would consider at least giving them a chance to do that, if it seems like there's enough desire to have that. Now, maybe your, you know, initial comments, or at least contacts have been somewhat, we'll say skeptical or concerning. I don't in the least, you know, have any desire to argue that. Now, these things are not easy. There's no doubt that they're difficult, you know, to both campaign for and to pass, but I can assure you, you know, giving people a right to express what they feel about it, to me, is as much of the democratic way as I know how to gauge it. But yet, we still have an opportunity, because I don't think any of us want to spin our wheels for three months and come up, you know, with, you know, one out of five or two out of five shots at thinking that we would be successful, because rest assured, there is a tremendous amount of effort and energy that goes into one of these campaigns, and it will take everybody, not necessarily voting for or against, but at least trying to explain what the real choices are. Yes, ma'am?
Well, the thing that I was going to say, I had some of the same questions that Alderman Height had asked, but I want to go a step further in that I remember when we had the one-cent sales tax regarding the ballpark, and electric rates were going up 38%. I know that some of my constituents had said, rather than the electric rates going up 38%, let's keep the one-cent tax, and that had come from some, you know, of my constituents. But one of the things that I am happy about is that we are, that you are going to hold this legislation, and this will give them an opportunity to call us, to come out to the meetings, or, and to discuss this at the neighborhood meetings.
Well, and the other thing, too, I mean, the one thing that I sure don't want to put on the table is the fact that this is absolutely the way it has to be. You know, I mean, if some people think that the reallocation of some of these dollars to the extent of even reducing them, you know, instead of, you know, a certain percentage we can add or subtract from that, in other words, there's no magic in this proposal other than trying to find something that I feel is a package that our citizens might be interested in increasing the burden that they already have. Now, one other observation, and I'll share this with all of you, I asked our office to take a look at cities around the state that were nine cents or above on their sales tax, and I was, to be honest with you, shocked and pretty surprised at the vast number of cities who are already at the nine-cent level or higher. So, you know, we're not, we'll say, trying to tempt us to being in, going into virgin territory, that there's not already a tremendous amount of cities, you know, all but the exception of perhaps Little Rock of our size that are already at nine cents or above. Now, Little Rock right now is a half cent below our number, they have a half-cent sales tax where we have one cent. So, any event, you know, the opportunity is there, you know, the challenge is significant, and I'm certainly not trying to claim that whatever we have, that I've put before us is the only package that we have any desire of trying to go forward with, but I do feel, you know, that in many respects, it is our responsibility to try to find ways to pay for what we think our folks want. And if we run up into a brick wall, then I certainly, you know, as one who would have to and have right and responsibility to be very involved in this, I have absolutely no desire to bounce my head against a wall that doesn't have at least an opportunity to find a crack in it somewhere. So, you know, if it is, if it is a brick wall, then I'd like to learn about it as soon as possible, and we can go on to other things. Alderman Gaines?
Here's one brick wall I mentioned in the newspaper when they called me about it, and it's, and it's a significant one, only, and only speaking one ward out there, and that's, as I said before, I know we need economic developments needed and all that, but that's a real concern they have there because that's so open-ended. The other thing, down there for prevention intervention and treatment programs, I'm going to make it, you know, you've nailed down, every time you've done this, you've been successful, and I'm not preaching to you, you've been successful because you nailed down exactly where it's going, what's going to be done with it, and there's no room for hedging. On this one, if I had a criticism of it, it's just a little bit vague, you know what I mean? For example, it says use for, money could be used for prevention, intervention, and treatment programs.
Well, that's not quite correct. I know that the sales tax, it's a permanent sales tax, indicated that we would split it 50/50 between operation and capital, and the community, we did campaign on streets, and we did campaign on drainage, and yet, if I remember right, I don't know that that was in the ballot title except by way of example.
That's true. We spoke about things more in clarity of resolutions, but our first penny sales tax, it was just split strictly capital expenses and operational expenses.
So, you know, you know, we told the folks in our campaign what we would do, but in terms of the ballot title, Alderman Gaines, I don't believe you're accurate. It was somewhat open-ended in terms of how we would allocate capital and how we would allocate operations, and to me, you know, if we've done anything in this community, you know, we've kept our pledge in terms of what we would do. I do not believe that we indicated in that ballot title how much we would spend on our senior center. I don't think we did that the first time. It could be corrected, but we indicated the senior center would be one of the things that we would do out of the capital side, and we've got a humdinger of a senior center. We do. So, we did not indicate how much we would spend, because I know my mind, it ought to, it was going to be around a million dollars. Well, it ended up being $5 million, although the state did give us $1 million of that. So, you know, in terms of some items that we discussed, you know, we didn't put, you know, if we had of, you know, the limitation on our senior center wouldn't have been nearly as good as what it ended up being after we had a committee that met for a year and tried to decide what they wanted and what they felt they would use, and I'm glad they did because my dollar limit on that was a lot lower than what we ended up. So, if we'd have been specific, we wouldn't have been looking at the senior center that we had. So, while I hear what you say, I disagree strongly with the analysis of the fact that we were, now, you know, if somebody, you know, wants to know some of the thoughts, then sure, and if that is a crippling part of this proposal, then without a doubt, I certainly would be willing to consider changing it, but I don't agree that we were specific in some of the things in the past, because if we had of, rest assured, we wouldn't have been able to be as responsive to the community as we have been in terms of going forward with the various programs that they wanted, and I'm very proud of those.
Well, I'm proud of you. You did a great job explaining it, but what I'm still, was talking about, wasn't necessarily the amount of money, but where the programs went. For example, let's just go back to economic development, how much money did you offhand, and you may not, but I heard $4 million would probably, that's what that would raise?
Well, it'd raise total of about a little less than $9 million. It would be 4.4, 4.5 million a year for two years when that ton, when that half cent would sunset.
Okay. What do you... What do you, what are your thoughts on reducing the residential rates by ten percent and then five percent? Would that be, they would never be raised again during the time of this, or what's your thoughts on that?
Well, first of all-
I was just in the inquisition either. I'm just asking a question.
And I'll be happy to answer it. You know, the reason that I picked two years for the sunset of that is, first of all, I've got some real feelings that anything that doesn't have a sunset will have a difficult time in passing, not that this won't anyway. But, you know, if you'll recall, we have Plum Point coming onto line the spring of two thousand and ten, and that is projected at current cost of our power, saving us about fifteen million dollars a year. So, it's been my hope, you've heard me say this a number of times from this seat, that it's my desire to lower electric rates and to do that when our cost of purchase power goes down, which, you know, unless, you know, we have an earthquake or a tornado in the wrong place, you know, we're going to start experiencing those kinds of savings, you know, the spring of two thousand and ten, which would be about the time that this tax would expire. So, it's my hope that upon the expiration of this portion of the reduction in cost of power, that we would then be able to apply some of the savings that we'd achieve, if not all, from Plum Point, to continuing, if not increasing, the reduction of those electric rates. You know, the six years in terms of the other portion of the sales tax would expire, but half of which would be going, half of that half, our fourth, would be going toward, by and large, salaries for our employees. And so, when we came to the fifth year, without a doubt, in my mind, we would be going back for at least an extension of that quarter cent, perhaps the half, if we had proved ourselves to do the things that people felt were justified with their sales tax money. And remember, too, that perhaps thirty-five to forty percent of this tax is generated by people who don't live here. Not that they don't have a, some responsibility and have an impact on our parks, our roads, our police, our fire, they do, and of right, this would give us, our citizens, a chance to recoup some of that cost from those who shop here. So, you know, I feel a little bit like a broken record, but that's by and large the way sales taxes operate.
Can I finish on that question? Okay.
Sure.
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
No, I mean, we got folks raising their hand, so go ahead and finish.
All right. Just real quick, but what we're saying then, we won't raise electric rates, you don't think, for those two years at least that's in there? Is that what we're saying?
I would certainly say that we would not be raising electric rates for the two years that we have this reduction. That would be, to me, a cornerstone. Now, you know, when that expires, you know, I would be, I'm very optimistic that, you know, that Plum Point would then give us an opportunity to maintain that reduction, if not increase it.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's in part the two-year sunset. Alderman Witcher?
Mayor, two questions. Number one, when would be the last time that we could consider this in order to hit the July eighth timeframe for the election? And number two-
Well, I think it's the first meeting in May, is what your chart did say.
I've got a chart on it with me, and I apologize. But it is, I think, by the first meeting in May is what we were running up on.
The twelfth, twelfth of May would be the last.
That, in order to do the July eighth election. Now, the other question is, you know, and this is, because I'm still a little confused by the fact that you've got to have a ballot title approved actually before we would be in a position to vote on it if we waited till the second meeting in May. Is that not correct?
You don't have to have your ballot title approved by DFNA before you vote on it. I can approve it, we can seek approval afterwards. The only problem would be if we had some kind of complication with ballot approval. Through DFNA, I'd have to come back to you again. That would be the, that's the advantage of getting approval on the front end.
Well, and obviously, if we have any questions about the legality or legitimacy of what we're taking to the voters, then, you know, to me, wait is the watchword.
All right. Second part of my question, Mayor. Just from a guestment standpoint, how much would, or what percent of that sales tax would you say would be paid by individuals who do not live within North Little Rock?
I'd say thirty-five to forty percent. Mr. Sisson, you got anything to add or subtract for that? You know, I don't know that we can figure it out, but-
I don't know. That's the figure I've heard from, but, you know, there's nothing that we have to-
I don't know if we got anything scientific on that, but that seems like a reasonable amount. Where we're located, the amount of people that come into the city, you know, the shopping complexes that we have, but to offer any scientific backup to that, I can't tell you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Ms. Robinson. It just occurred to me, regarding our rights, if we're going to hold our rights steady and/or would, okay, let me go through this. Okay. Would one of our options perhaps provide, if we don't do the sales tax, to pass some of our electric costs on to those outside of the city?
Say that again.
Talking about the residents of Sherwood?
Residents of Sherwood or other areas.
So, what's your question now?
Well, if, you know, if this is not successful, you know, can we pass along part of, or part of that cost that we are carrying now internally, basically to pay, you know, for them to pay market price for the electricity they're getting?
Well, let me, let me answer that this way, and then Mr. Carter can add on. You know, we are involved in litigation with Sherwood. The trial-level court has not rendered a written decision. They've rendered a preliminary decision that is in the process of being reduced to writing. We're in negotiations with them with regard to a stand-down, possible stand-down agreement. But based on the preliminary order of the judge, the answer is, you know, we can charge Sherwood whatever we want to. Now, whether this council would do that, you know, is a different story. Whether we'd recommend it is a different story. You know, it's, we are, we are walking through a bit of a minefield when it comes to the legal aspects of the implications with regard to Sherwood. The decision of the court, you know, probably raised more questions than it answered in terms of what we ought to do and what we could do. And by and large, it seemed to undo what we thought had been a presidential rulings that a previous court had done with regard to equality of rates between us and Sherwood. So, based on the ruling of the judge, you know, it really did open the window for what we might choose to do and suffer the consequences as a result of those choices. You know, because I fully would expect, you know, a variety of really interesting things going on, depending on what this council does. Just a second, Ms. Robinson, you know, you have anything to add to that?
The only comment that I would make is, there's an outside possibility that that might be an option. Right now, I wouldn't consider it an option to push rates, any increased burden in rates, shift that from our North Little Rock citizens to those who we are serving outside of North Little Rock. I wouldn't consider it an option at this juncture. It may develop in the future.
Okay. But I guess, you know, my thought is that basically through our budget and the sales tax that we presently have, making a contribution of electric rate, that we're subsidizing the rates outside of the city with our budget. Is that, in essence, what we're doing?
That's true. Once we're subsidizing it with a general sales tax, then that's what we would be doing. And-
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
To the tune-
But to the tune that we would be doing this, our, but our, that's currently being contemplated in negotiations.
No, maybe make sure I'm clear. Certainly, my intent, that to the extent that this would go, this sales tax would go to a reduction of rates, it would be solely North Little Rock rates, and it would be probably more in the sense of a credit or an offset rather than an actual reduction of rates. But I mean, the math would basically be the same, but it would be a credit or an offset in the term of ten percent of residential rates for North Little Rock businesses and North Little Rock residential ratepayers.
Very good.
That would be an absolute. Okay? Questions? Yes, ma'am?
I'm, the capital expense and operational expenses of the city of North Little Rock, would that be the employees raises and-
Well, the capital would not be, the operation-
Operational-
That's correct.
And police and fire?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
I've had a lot of calls, like Alderman Height, and emails, and just about everyone, I mean, they all say they have, I mean, they want the fire and police to have their raises, they want the city employees to have their raises. Their one concern is on this economic development. They all have questions on that. And that's what I wanted to ask Bob Sisson, because in this, you know, on the half percent for two years, to reduce electric rates ten percent and business five percent, and then the remaining to go to economic development, do we know what amount that, or close to what amount that would be? Out of the four and a half million would go to economic development? Since, but not-
What's your question?
What, how much would it go to economic development?
It'd be about four point five or six.
That's the remaining of the funds after the-
Well, the sales, the reduction of rates, I've been told, would be about, well, you can give the exact, I think it's one point one for business and three point something for residential. Do you have that, Mr. Sisson?
That's correct. Each year, it'd be about-
Four point six million for both, I think.
Yes, sir. Three, basically, three and a half for, or three point four for residential a year and one point one for business.
So, you're looking at four and a half for both, if you combine both. Now, could we do four for businesses and eleven, I mean, you know, obviously-
Well, here's my question. The half percent generates how much per year? Are we, I mean, is it around eight thousand now? Where are we?
No, eight million.
I know sales are down.
It's almost, Mr. Sisson, isn't it almost nine, about eight point eight, eight point nine?
It'd be almost nine, yes, sir. Be slightly less than that.
Okay. And then four and a half will go to economic development. Is that right?
Under the current recommendation for two years-
Under the current recommendation, it'd be four and a half million to economic development. Okay.
Right, about that, yes, ma'am.
And then the other four and a half to reduce the electric rates for North Little Rock residents and businesses?
Yes.
Okay. That's the one concern that everyone, you know, like I said, you know, they want the fire and the police and city employees to have their raises, and they want their drainage, but the economic development is one of the big things that I keep hearing continuously.
You know, I mean, like I said, we-
And I know, and you told me today, that this can all be changed and can be taken out, and percentages can be changed, so that's, you know, and like Alderman Height, you know, I know we all want to hear from everyone on that. That's it.
Other questions?
I do have one more.
Let me go ahead and open it up. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to make any comments on this, feel free. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Shirley Simpson, and I am president of County Jail Reform now, and the jail is a big concern of mine. I have three questions. You mentioned opening the jail in North Little Rock, and the interlocal agreement, it was leased to the county, and then I understand the county leased it to the state. So, has that come back to North Little Rock?
I think the county, Mr. Sisson, correct me, has probably got, it expires maybe this year in terms of that lease, but the county has not, has indicated that, at least in conversation, that, you know, if we had a use for it, they could, you know, they don't have any use for it.
Okay. Well, I know the interlocal agreement didn't run out till two thousand and fourteen, and that's why I'm asking. Another thing, you said that-
Now, let me just make sure everybody understands, that would be my, you know, in visiting with Chief Bradley, that would be my absolutely last choice in trying to do something along those lines.
I agree with that, too. You mentioned the million dollars to go to the county for the jail or whatever. Now, would that just go in the general fund? Would it be designated just for the jail? And when this sales tax runs out, are you still going to give the million dollars, or is that going to drop?
Well, the answer is, it would be, to answer your questions in order, at least in my plans in discussing this, the answer is yes. It would come off the top of that second half cent that would go for six years, and it would go only toward jailing operations, whether it be paying Conway to take more people, and I use that as an example, because they may be getting close to not wanting anymore, I don't know, but Conway or somebody else, or even a private company that may come in and decide that they want to build a jail. And we've had some contact, not recently, but over the years about that. So, that would only go toward jailing. Now, there may be a portion of that, but that's under discussion, to go for prevention, intervention, and treatment, to try to keep people out of jail. So, you know, that's something that we would need to decide, you know, whether to do, or whether it might make it more confusing, and we ought to do something a little different. This is a pretty busy ballot title, and, you know, Mr. Carter and I are trying to work through, you know, trying to decide whether, and this council, too, the complexities of the, of the program is too, you know, challenging in order to try to explain exactly what it would do. So, there is some of that, but I would certainly like to see, you know, if I could put every egg in my basket, some of that money go into prevention, intervention, and treatment. And then the remainder would be divided fifty-fifty among capital and operations.
Okay.
And that would expire. Now, what I'm trying to say is that that would expire at the end of six years, so at least with regard to the operations, side, we are taking a risk. And that risk is, we come back in five years and the people not vote, not vote for that quarter cent, at least that, that would go toward operations. If they didn't vote for that, without a doubt, we would be laying off people and reducing services. And if we didn't do what we perhaps ought to with their dollars, then they would certainly have a chance to say yea or nay over a continuation of that half cent, and we could be setting ourselves up for a very serious reduction in services if the folks didn't go along with extending at least that quarter of the total package, quarter cent of the total package.
Okay. In December of last year, at the Rose City Crime Watch meeting, we had a discussion about Pulaski County asking for a tax, and you had brought that up. Now, this is totally separate from that. Am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You brought up a question I need to ask.
Just, let's see, see if we got anybody else, and then we'll go back to the council.
Good evening. I'm Jim Art, and sitting here listening to your discussion. And if I understood it wrong, please make sure the folks at home didn't understand it wrong. Did I understand there's a possibility you could charge Sherwood more electric rates than you did our customers, and are they going to get the discount, lower rates if this is voted in? Thank you.
Well, the answer is, under the current verbal order, as it's been stated by Judge Fox, you know, he indicated that we were not bound to charge out-of-city customers the same rates as in-city customers, and that has not been reduced to writing. The second answer to your question, your two questions are, you know, would the discount apply to out-of-city customers? The answer to that is no. It would only apply to residents and businesses that were within the corporate city limits of North Little Rock and were North Little Rock customers. Microphone's still open.
My name is Fay Kirkwood, and I have a couple of questions. One, I want to make a statement, is that it is obvious that this issue has raised a lot of questions among the council. Now, you all have had a little time to look at this and talk about it, and I believe you commented once that it's only been on the table for about ten days. Therefore, the public has not had a chance to digest all of this either. This is the public's dollar we're talking about. I think we need to consider the cost, and what would that cost be for a special election?
Twenty-two, roughly twenty-two thousand dollars.
Upward twenty-two. Okay? With our budget being as stressed as it is, and the economy being as it is, we have an upcoming election, I think that time would be better used for the public to digest what is going on with their money and make an informed decision, give you all time to determine how to word it properly, to get the divisions made properly, so that we're not buying a pig and a poke. We need to know where that dollar is going. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and recess this public hearing that was sort of informally opened, and it'll be certainly available again next council meeting. Alderman Gaines?
So, two quick questions now. The million dollars we have down here, one half tax, that doesn't, I misunderstood, that doesn't necessarily mean we'll open a jail or even close to that, and just pay for whatever, like we're doing now?
What do we charge, what are we paying now, chief? About twenty to thirty thousand dollars a month? Is that what our current- Is that what our current, uh, check to Conway is?
Yes, sir, he's averaging about 20,000 a month.
Okay. So, you know, we'd hope, I mean, my, my desire would be to find, you know, I don't know whether we can add to Conway or not, but my first desire would be to try to find additional bed space in a similar way that we have an arrangement with Conway. That would be my first desire. Second desire would be to try to figure out if the county might be able to open something that would be even closer than Conway, uh, that would be reasonably cost-effective. And then there may be the other options, the last of which would be opening our own jail.
Okay, now, real quick question, too. I'm just, I guess we had a rumor, stuff like that, but I, I thought we were going to try to hire more police and fire, but we're going to try to make sure we keep the ones we've got. Is that what you're saying? There's not any prevention, any way here to, the way this is, is worded, to hire any more policemen and firemen, is there?
Probably not, uh, in terms of hiring anymore. It's simply, you know, most of the funds would be directed, at least in terms of that quarter cent, would be directed toward compensation of the employees that we have, including, you know, the, the other roughly four to 500 folks that, uh, work for us that are not police and fire.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, this is a question that, you know, Mrs. Simpson was talking about, the possibility if Pulaski County passes, say, a, I'm just throwing these numbers out, a quarter percent jail tax, would that be on top, and then we say this did pass, would we pay, be paying nine and a quarter percent, or would?
If this passed and the county did it-
Passed a tax?
And there was no other arrangement on the front end, the answer is yes.
Okay.
That it would be in addition to what our sales tax would be. Now, the likelihood of our folks maybe doing something like that, you know, you look back to what we did the last time we voted, and we had our ballpark penny on, uh, it was like 60/40 against, uh, the countywide jail tax. So, there's no doubt that this would, you know, have an adverse effect on that as a possible solution. Yeah, and, and, and as I talked to the editorial board of, of one of our local papers, you know, part of my concern is, you know, that we have, the chief has, and our police department have problems today, and I think the best solution is a countywide solution. But I don't know that we can continue to wait on a countywide answer to trying to deal with what I consider to be our day-to-day problems. Uh, so, you know, if, if I had some comfort level that the county had a solution to this, to me, this is probably, you know, still, if not the number-one problem right up there with the rest of them, and that is putting bad people behind bars after they commit a crime. You know, so I'm in no way trying to say that this is, is not still what I think is our number-one problem in terms of directing resources to it. And, and yet, I don't know that this community ought to continue to wait on a countywide solution that hopefully will come someday, but it certainly doesn't appear to be around the corner.
But that one million, that's, I don't know, that kind of, Miss Simpson was, it kind of sounded like that maybe that was going to the county, but that one million will not go to the county. That million is to go to whatever alternate source that we can find, right?
Whatever, chief, and, and we in this council would determine to be the best way to try to keep bad people off the streets. Now, that's sort of ambiguous in some respects, but I use the example of Conway right now as to one of the things we're doing now. Would I think that Conway would have enough room for us to spend a million dollars a year? Probably not. And they may even be getting close to being full now. Chief, why don't you come to the microphone, uh, and, and, and answer me if Conway's got any more room in the end?
No, sir, they do not. In fact, we're running over our allotment. Uh, we had, Little Rock, of course, followed suit with what we did, and so they took an equal number of beds, so we're limited now to a maximum of 30. There are beds, I know in, in other parts of the state, I haven't done a complete survey, but I've had, uh, some chiefs approach me in, uh, some cities that were a little bit further away than I'd like to use, but they, they even offered to meet me halfway to, to get the business. But there are some beds out there in the state and, that we could use if that was the decision.
So that's, you know, it's a somewhat of a general answer, uh, but, you know, we, you know, and I hadn't asked a question recently on Conway, but apparently there's not much more room in the end, you know, in some measure, because Little Rock followed our lead and are taking, we got the same amount of beds as Conway? I mean, does Little Rock have the same number we have?
Yes, sir, I believe we both are allocated 30.
Uh, so, at least we've got as big a slice of their bed space as, as our city to the south, so, you know, that, you know, that, that was, was partly my thinking, is that, you know, I'm sure we could find a way to keep more people off the streets. Uh, we're spending 20 to 30,000 dollars a month now, you know, with that kind of dollars, we ought to be able to figure out how to keep a lot more off the street. Thank you. Microphone's sort of about to close on this, at least for this evening. Uh, with that, let me go ahead and ask that we go to the next item.
Mayor, at the beginning of that discussion, you asked that I read it, and I never did. Did you still want it read?
Did you read it?
No.
Well, just go ahead and read it.
Okay. A resolution directing the city attorney to prepare ordinances levying a one-cent sales and use tax and calling for an election, and to forward the ordinances to the Arkansas Department of Finance and Administration for approval. And then, do you want a public hearing at the next meeting on this?
Yep.
Okay. And next item, Resolution 0843, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution repealing Resolution 6758, which declared 1319 Garland Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to be a public nuisance and condemned it.
Let me just really quickly, can I get a resolution to adopt this, please?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, these folks tore down the house, and now they want to rebuild it, and they, we can't do it with this, uh, still, uh, on the books. So this is essentially getting off the books so they can rebuild it, uh, if I'm not mistaken. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0844, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the North Little Rock Fire Department to enter into an agreement for mutual aid and fire protection and hazardous materials instant response with the Little Rock Air Force Base Fire Department.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? On the motion?
Isn't this a renewal? Don't we do this every year?
Yes, sir, this, this, for three years, this is a renewal.
Okay. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution-
I'm going to hold the next one, so you don't even need to read it. Uh, we're going to try to work out a few-
Yes, we are, hold now.
-understandings.
Yes, we are, yes, sir. Excuse me.
Uh, you know, so that'll be held. Next item?
Resolution 0847, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and ratifying adjustments to the 2008 Annual Action Plan to Decrease Project Funding Amounts in accordance with the reduction in the 2008 CDBG funding to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0848, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution directing the North Little Rock Community Planning Department to distribute lead safe information to contracts, contractors seeking renovation permits.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0849, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings against property located at 1216 West Third Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mayor, I, I guess, you know, the next three pieces of legislation, I would assume are, are all, all together, involving the same project.
Actually, only two.
Two, okay. Uh, okay. Quick, quick, couple of quick questions. You know, have we made a diligent effort to settle with these folks, and have we made an honest effort?
I would say yes. Mr. Voiles, you want to come to the microphone? We've had appraisals, we've offered appraisals, the appraised value, and we either had no response or certainly had turned down. Mr. Voiles?
Yes, sir, we, we, Tom Firstill's office did the appraisals on these properties. We did offer the appraised value. Uh, one of those came back with, uh, you know, over twice the price. Well, I think it's the first time it was 300,000 for a small house, but the second time, they came back with over twice the price, so we think we've exhausted that one. The second time, we, we did take the appraised offer to them, and I, I just didn't get a response.
Okay, so, so we, I'll ask the question, Mr. Ross, we have made a good faith effort to deal with these people, and we have substantiated a, a good record-
Yes.
-in connection with that. Okay.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0850, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings against property located on Lot 12, Block 11, Giles Addition to the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption. Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0831, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Assistant Ordinance Amendment to Master Street Plan, Ordinance Number 7932, to delete Richards and Richards Street Overpass, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the second reading.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An Ordinance Amendment to Master Street Plan, Ordinance Number 7932, to delete Richards and Richards Street Overpass, second reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place on the third reading.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Includes new business.
Any council member have any comments or questions? Uh, Ms. Robinson?
I'd like to see, uh, Mr. Tim Marvin, if he's here.
Who?
Tim Marvin.
No, he, he wasn't here today, was he?
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Marvin is here.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, I have an announcement.
Anyone else?
I have an announcement.
Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Billy Grace from the animal shelter asked me to make this announcement for him. It's regarding the North Shore Animal League of America. They travel across the country, and this will be their eighth year to do this, and the seventh consecutive year that they've come to North Little Rock. North Little Rock is the only city in Arkansas that they stop in, and we're also the smallest city on their route. Um, their purpose is to help find forever homes for orphaned puppies, kids, kittens, dogs, and cats. It is this week, Wednesday, at 11:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. at Lakewood Village Shopping Center. We want to invite everyone to come out, and if you come out and you're one of the first 50 people, and you bring a sterilized animal, you will be given a free microchip and rabies shot.
What's the date again?
Uh, Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m., this Wednesday. Oh, and I have one more. Just one more.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm a member of the North Little Rock Women's Club, and I want to announce for them their 50th anniversary celebration, which is Friday, April the 25th. A reception will be held at, from 2:00 till 4:00 p.m. at the Hayes Center, and everyone is invited, and all of the ladies will be bringing little finger foods and want to visit with you. And that's all I have.
The only other thing on the list is the rummage sale for the Friends of the Animals, April 19th, uh, at, starting at 8:00 a.m. until, uh, 4001 Lake Shore Drive, uh, so help the friends out from that perspective. Alderman, uh, Bryant, and then Alderwoman Ross.
I'd just like to say, and I hope I have the dates right, uh, the post-prom for the, the high school is, uh, April the 25th, and they have an open house on the 24th, if anybody's interested in going down to see or help, uh, set that, that up. Thank you.
Alderwoman Ross?
Uh, I said, um, this is still talking about the tax when I've talked to a lady, and she made some really good comments, but one of her, uh, comments was, and this is just something to throw out there, that she wouldn't mind adding a safety tax onto possibly her water bill, or her gas bill, or electric bill, or whatever.
I think our city attorney is, that can't be done.
Yeah, yeah, we can't do that.
I mean, we have the recycling fee on there, you can't add a safety fee?
Yeah, you have to have an election to do that, and-
Yeah, definitely, okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, uh, there was a lawsuit about that, and I won't say in this city, uh, 30, 40 years ago.
A public safety, yeah. I mean-
I mean, I, it wouldn't generate enough, you know, as much as a sales tax, but, okay. I'm glad I asked.
I mean, I don't know that you couldn't do that, but it'd take an election.
It'd an election to do it.
So we couldn't just do it like we did the recycling fee and add it to the, uh-
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
And also, now, and Alderman Gaines is going to have to help me on this.